Okay, all this meeting in order. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. Please stand for the present allegiance.
I swear to the Lord, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, entertain the motion to pull a pool of minutes for the pool of minutes for three of these names.
I didn't get any. Did we have one?
Yeah, I can't seem to have such a point like that since about two or three weeks ago.
She's having it in her pocket.
Can we put it on the next Monday? So I have a chance when we don't know.
On the next Monday.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
But I didn't turn them on.
I'm not sure. I probably just overlooked them on the box.
And I haven't been hearing a good talk. That's for the record.
For the record.
Okay, well, we'll put them on next Monday's meeting. All right, next we have two citizens comments. Person is Mr. Bushman. Praise for this one.
Judge, commissioners, I just wanted to give you all an update on the appraisal district. The budget was passed by the other entities, and so we'll be working on the budget for the next year that we presented to you all. We encourage you to reach out to your two representatives on the board, and we'll try to address the issues that the county had with the budget for the next budget cycle. The thing that's a little different about our budget is, at the end of the year, the cash balance returns back to the entities, and so we continue to look for ways to save money within our current budgets. And one of the largest line items is the insurance. And so as Mr. Smith pointed out, TAC has a better option for us, but we can't contract with them separately. It has to be as part of a larger pool involving a local agreement, and there's a process for that. And part of that, the very brief part of that process, is an evaluation of impact, and they can only do that with a request from the court. So that's item number 46 out of the 73 items that you are working on today. And so I just wanted to have that item considered by the court. It's only to evaluate impact, doesn't require any action, and then depending on that report, then we can decide kind of where we are there. So that's a potential $35,000 savings that the appraisal district could have, and then return that money back to the entities. And so with that, that's all I have for today.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. Gallo. Anil?
Hello, good morning. The reason for me coming in today is because to talk to you about the high risk of fires close to the north side of Dorio, Rimfire Road, and the lack of a fire hydrant there. The area basically consists of large lots, most of them family homes, of course, and with overgrown vegetation, dried tall grass, plants, trees, which increase of the risk of fires, of course. And of course, with these temperatures, even more. The nearest fire hydrant to that Rimfire Road is 6,872 feet away. It's between Huckleberry and Wildgrove Drive. That's basically 1.3 miles away. I spoke to a fire department representative, and I was informed that in case of a fire, there would be a fire engine that would respond. And they told me that the fire truck basically has a capability of the 500 gallons of water. But if there's, but of course, they would have to refuel 6,872 feet away. It was explained to me that the 500 gallon alone would not be enough to suffice a full-blown house fire, and at least six to 10 trips would have to be done to refuel. Of course, time in life, time is life, and by having the fire truck making various trips and filling the truck would have to, it would lead to wasting of valuable time. And of course, it would equal to possible death, tragedy, and greater catastrophe. So how can this be prevented? How can we avoid the county being possibly accounted for the responsible for such a tragedy would be to place a fire hydrant closer? And of course, I'm a representative of the area of the Rimfire Road, and I'm my cell phone a five acre lot, and I'm currently building a home there. So that's why I'm very concerned about this issue. And of course, alongside of other families that I have spoken in the area, I would like to request the possibility to have a fire hydrant closer to our area. And of course, if requested, I myself might make myself available to get signatures or anything that's needed. And of course, the reason of my high concern is because I myself work in the emergency medical field, and I've cared and experienced firsthand effects of burns, and I'm very concerned that the property around my community is not there. So of course, I make myself available to you, and of course, here, I leave what I just spoke today, and of course, a little map of exactly what I'm talking about.
Good night. Come on, say anything.
All right, citizens comments. Weekend, respond to your.
Okay.
I would like to visit with you.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. You can say that.
All right, next we have anybody else who wants to go to the next item?
I would like to, this court.
Sure.
I would like to offer my gratitude for Mr. Smith and the court, distinguished court members, and you're going to read a proclamation honoring my father today, who recently passed away. He served three terms for Valverde County. It was very honored to do that. He served with, certainly with your great friend, Commissioner Wardlaw, and that said he opens off, he had great admiration and respect for Commissioner Owens' grandfather, but also with Commissioner Padilla, Commissioner Torres, and Commissioner Worley, I believe, if I'm not leaving somebody out that I remember. But y'all accomplished great things in those days, and I want to thank all of you, the staff here, for honoring him, and I know that you will continue to work in the spirit of cooperation that was set in those days, and continue to work very hard for Valverde County. I just want to thank you on behalf of my family, especially for those of you who've worked so hard with my dad when he was here. Thank you very much.
Thank you also. Jerry? Wait, Mr. Wardlaw? Wait a minute. Let me get to it, then you do it. All right, next we have item six, presentation of resolution, Honorable James Lee Leonard, former Valverde County Commissioner, and Mr. Wardlaw would like to read the proclamation. Go ahead.
Whereas on July 17th, 2017, residents of Sonora and Del Rio, Texas, lost an admired public servant and community leader with the passing of James Leonard, the age of 87. Whereas on January 22nd, 1930, James Leonard was born in Del Rio, Texas, to J.B. Leonard and Nell Galloway Leonard, and was the brother to Gerald Leonard and Johnny Leonard. Whereas November 1995, James Leonard married the love of his life, Patricia Alexander Leonard, also of Del Rio. And whereas the marriage resulted in the birth of two sons, James Randall Leonard and Yuri Leonard, whom he loved dearly, and whereas he cherished and enjoyed the company of his grandchildren, Craig Leonard, Savannah Chambers, and Zachary Leonard. And whereas James Leonard spent much of his early life as a professional rodeo cowboy, competing in places like Cheyenne, Wildman, San Antonio, Houston, and San Angelo, Texas. Whereas James Leonard was devoted to agriculture and served as the Director of Production Credit Association, President of Del Rio Wool and Mohair Company, Director of Rio Grande Electric Co-op, and was a founding member and Director of Producers Market Co-op. And whereas James Leonard served his community as a Valverde County Commissioner, Caprice Saint Three, from 1977 to 1988. And whereas James Leonard was a devoted Christian, was a member of the First Baptist Church of Sonora, Texas. And whereas steadfast in his commitment to his family and his community, James Lee Leonard has had a positive impact in the lives of his loved ones and fellow citizens alike, and he will be fondly remembered for years to come. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Valverde County Commissioners' Court, Section One, the members of this honorable body, both individually and collectively, do hereby pay tribute to the memory of James Lee Leonard and extend heartfelt sympathy to the members of his family. Section Two, the county clerk of this Commissioners' Court shall transmit a copy of this resolution to the family of James Lee Leonard, passed and approved this 14th day of August 2017.
All right, Mr. Leonard, can I come up here?
I'm going to make a motion.
Yeah, you want to make a motion?
I'd like, I'll make a motion, we approve this.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed. All right, did you have a, did you come around here so we could take?
Get out of your way. Won't you come around? Stand right. Okay. There you go, that's great right there. Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, you'd be very proud.
Thank you so much.
All right, any comments, anybody else? All right, let's go to item number seven. Deputy Mr. Nelson, Valverde County Sheriff's District, elector, discuss possible action on request from the Valverde County Commissioners' Court to certify the 2017 property tax rule.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'd like to present the certified 2017 property tax rules that were given to me by the appraisal district. The county general fund taxable value of $2,375,693,956. This is certified by appraisal roll. Roll start value of $12,826,877, and certified by the Controller's Office, minus gross amount of $382,275,924, and a transfer adjustment of $211,754. For the farm-to-market values, it's value of $2,358,269,2 billion, 358 million, 269,550. Roll start value at $12,826,877. And this is gross amount of $301,438,224, and transfer adjustments of $427,177. And of course, we always try to do the 100% collection of this, that's just what I anticipate collecting. Part of it's going to be the current tax, and the other one's going to be the due income taxes.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Any questions from Mr. Nelson? Got all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed, nobody, five zero. Okay, next we have a discussed possible action regarding post-tax rate. Okay, on this one?
Anybody want to talk about that?
Have they want to talk about?
Our effective rate is actually higher than our current rate.
Correct.
So our effective rate is the 0.61, no, sorry, 0.5649.
Our effective, no, it shouldn't be our effective, our effective should be 5237.
Talking about the total rate.
The total?
This year's effective operating rate. And on this one?
I made you go back.
Says this year's effective operating rate.
Right, this is how you're feeling, you're going to go back. That's the right.
So we have 3.9 more or less.
Correct.
So are the last?
The effective, correct, on the calculation.
What caused our effective rate to be this way? Not in here 16 years, I've never seen our effective rate higher than our current rate.
Our current property valuation is down. We did have new builds, but those new builds are backed out. We also did lose some money due to court action, and what that does when you lose money due to court action, is that's worked back into the formula on the, it raises the denominator, and then which raises the, I'm sorry, lowers the denominator, which raises the effective rate, which gives the tax entity a chance to get it back to the effective rate.
And this is just from the general fund. Our current is 0.49. This year's effective rate for.
Yeah.
0.49. So it's a loss of revenue of how much? If we maintain the current rate instead of the effective rate, how much money can we lose?
Now, you're including the actual dollars. The actual dollars. The actual dollars is going to be a loss of about $150,000.
$150,000.
But that is not how the calculation is meant to figure.
But if you figured it based off of the calculation, it would be higher than that.
Correct.
Because then you add back in the bills on top. So your revenue differs jointly.
Correct.
So to generate the same amount of revenue on the same taxing, not including the bills, we would have to raise the rate 0.5237 to generate the same revenue, not concluding no bills.
Correct. With adjustments. It's the adjusted tax, and that adjusted is a 10-step process.
Is that all we're doing?
Oh, it rounded around because when you, when you look at the effective rate, you look at the total values, this is values go down, but the formula that the state gives you, with which to work with, is what determines your rate. And I couldn't get my mind around it until after about an hour and a half that I visited with Matt, and it's just, yeah, it is what it is. I mean, and it's, when you do the calculations according to what the state gave you, your bottom number is, it is what it is.
My, 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 there is, we should leave at the same tax rate as we had last, because if we lower, it's going to bite us next year too.
You're talking about?
Effective tax.
Adopting the effective tax rate, not the current tax rate. Because the current tax rate is 0.49, the effective rate is 0.52.
Yeah, adopting the effective tax.
Effective tax rate. And then what would be the total revenue, including new bills, generated if we go to the 0.52?
I have a better calculation.
About 810?
About 800.
About 810?
Yeah, it's 207,000, depending, right?
Depending on the collection rate, yes?
Yeah, so you're right at a little over 800, and then we, me and Matt have been arguing about the, what is the rate that you're going to collect, so he's saying a little over 800, and I'm saying a little over 800. And when you look at putting that 800 into our, after we do the savings and everything in our budget, we're still.
We're still short. You know, that's my biggest issue about doing a, because basically, it's a tax increase anyway, you look at it, you know it's the effective rate is, until we fix the budget and fix all of the other pieces, it's hard for me to justify doing tax increases. I know we need to.
The plan, Commissioner Nelson, I mean, I spent a lot of time looking at it, and I think you said you spent an hour and a half, or something like that, with two or three other people, when we look at what we've done with no raises, the 5% cut, and the raise increase, or not, doing the effective rate as what it states here, which again is raising the rate, the tax rate, we're still a little bit, we're still short on our budget after doing all of that.
Correct, and that was just the first round of macro cuts, we can come in there, we can get some micro cuts.
To try to get the balance.
Correct.
I have a difficult time because I'm not convinced we've cut everywhere we need to cut, and I'm still not convinced we've got all these special funds where they need to be, but I understand we're still short at the end of the day. So if we did a portion of that, split it in half, that would be what? About 400? Can we, if we decide today to do something, can we come back later and readjust it if we wanted to? This is only adopting a proposed rate.
Correct.
Until we adopt the actual rate.
Correct, as long as we don't, do not go above the effective, then yes.
I want to make a motion to keep the rate that we currently have, and then look at it if we go through the budget process.
I'll second that for clarification.
We keep our current tax rate that we have in this current budget, which would be the 0.499300.
And you've got a second. Could I make one comment? If we did go to the point, if we went to the effective tax rate and all the cuts happened, we could adjust and go back the other way.
We can do it either way. We can, we can adopt the current rate now and then come back and change it to the effective rate at a later date.
As long as you go.
Or we can adopt the effective rate and then come back and reduce it to the lower rate.
Yeah, with people comfortable doing that, and then come back and roll it back.
Well, you've got a motion, right?
Yeah, I had a motion, second, yes.
I understand the money needs to be there, but I'm just not convinced we've done what we need to do in our budget to get where we need to get to.
We haven't, we've only done one cycle.
Yep.
There's probably two or three different other cutting cycles that we can go through before we can start to look at revenue.
You know, and my deal with the cutting, we wanted to take the 5% out. I mean, we were already bouncing on bottom on some of our budgets. If we do another just straight across the board, it's going to hurt my opinion.
Correct, it wouldn't be straight across the board. Now we'd be looking at line items that may be overinflated, that were never used before in the past, and we can start to look at personnel that may never be filled or won't be filled for a while.
You know, you've got a budget here with several budget amendments moving from office supplies to this and travel, which tells me that there's too much money in those line items, but we're not here to discuss the budget, so before the council reminds us that we're not.
Do you want to stick to your?
Yeah, right now, so.
You won't be able to come back?
Yeah, we can. Why can't we? It just, that's what the question I ask, is can we go up if we need to?
You can go down, but you can't go up. I think, I mean, I'm not absolutely sure.
Well, that was my question, is can we change it and go up if we decide to at a later date?
I don't think so, but that's not a definitive answer. I think you can go down, but you can't go up.
Okay.
But I think.
Have you said?
If that's the case, then I'll pull my motion.
But Matt might know better.
I don't know, it's one, that's reading I asked the question, is once we get through the budget process, can we go back up?
I see you're stating concern.
Can we table this and then come back?
No, this was actually supposed to have been done like 30 days ago.
This, Commissioner, I think we had the same question the last go-round, and I think we could lower it, but we couldn't go back up.
But Matt said he has a concern.
Well, you raised that, yeah, so it would just be best and safer just to go.
Because I mean, at the end of the day, we don't want to raise taxes, I mean, it's just a matter, it's a matter of wording. We're going to the effective tax rate, at the end of the day, it is raising taxes, I don't care, slice it.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah. But if we were to go with the effective tax rate, it would give us the ability to go up to that, and then go.
I will pull my motion, with a second, we'll pull this second.
I'll pull it.
And then I will make a motion to adopt the effective rate, 0.523700.
Five, two.
Are you okay making that motion, or you want me to make that?
Okay.
Okay, I just.
Second, wait a second, okay?
I just don't like it.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed? Nobody, five zero. Thank you, Matt. All right. We'll see you, Leonard, coming. Thank you, thank you for coming. All right, next we have Deputy Tagadinho, Chairman, Chairperson of the Valverde County Welfare Board Committee, the name of Rose Myra Samona, because of the vacancy of Valverde County Fair.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed? Nobody, five zero. Item 10, Rob Stevenson, Executive Director, Equity CDC, Consider and Act Upon Resolution Authorizing Submission of 2017 Colonial Self-Care Program, Application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, Authorizing the County Judge to Serve as Authorized Representative.
Motion to approve, second.
The motion and second, any discussion?
Quick, Judge, part of this deal, is that solid waste in this one?
Yes, sir, same as last one.
Okay. And if you would get with Matt, I think there are some funds that need to be run first.
Very well.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion, and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed? Nobody, five zero. Next, item 11, Rob Stevenson, Executive Director, Equity CDC, Discussion of Action Concerning Provision of Candidate Colonial Resident Servicy Committee to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
So the CREC Board, for those that may not be familiar with it, is a committee based upon residents from El Paso, Brownsville, and they serve directly to the Board of the Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And they advise the Board on the colonial issues ranging from housing to sanitation to water and sewer, all things up and down the board. And they serve four-year terms, and our current three members we have from Valverde County, their terms are expiring in October. So the state is requesting that the county come up with replacements, or they can re-up the current ones. Hopefully, you have a little handout where I listed some names. Under the current CREC members, only one won't be eligible anymore, the secondary, Irasma Guera Chaparro, she has moved out of the colony, is no longer technically in a colony, and therefore cannot serve as a CREC member, but the other two, if the commissioner so chooses, could be re-upended. Our recommendation for three new ones is just to inject some new blood, some new energy, and these three ladies have shown us a lot of energy and enthusiasm for the program.
So you're asking us to adopt the ones on the list?
Yes, sir, the newest.
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed? Nobody, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have item 12, Troy McAmidill, 911, Director of Mineral Grant Development Council Discussion of Action Pool, under the local agreement between Mineral Grant and authorizing the county to sign.
Just for the record, I'm not the director, I'm a 911 math specialist, I just got it typed in wrong.
Okay.
You're trying to give me more money?
I'll take it. Did y'all get a copy of this?
Did, is our, let's try and turn this office up with this.
I will say this, it's the same as it was the last by any means.
Was it, no changes?
I'm making motion to approve. Consider.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye on those opposed? Nobody, five zero.
Judge, question?
May I ask you a few questions that relates to our.
She has moved out of the colony, is no longer technically in a colony and therefore cannot serve as a CREC member, but the other two, if the commissioner so chooses, could be re-upended. Our recommendation for three million is just to inject some new blood, some new energy, and these three ladies have shown us a lot of energy and enthusiasm for the program.
So you're asking us to adopt the ones on the list?
Yes, sir, the newest.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next we have item twelve, Troy McAmidill, nine eleven, Director of Mineral Grant Development Council Discussion, Watching Pool, and the local agreement between Mineral Grant and authorizing the county judge to sign.
Just for the record, I'm not the director. I'm a nine-one-one math specialist. I just got it. Tacked in wrong.
Okay.
You're trying to give me more money?
I'll take it. Did y'all get a copy of this?
Did, let's turn the office up with this.
I will say this, it's the same as it was the last by any means.
No changes?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody, five zero.
Judge, question. May I ask you a question that relates to our plat? Troy, you had related to me one time, and thank you for the help you've given the county on several issues. You related to me, though, that at some point in time, you would no longer be able to provide nine-one-one addresses on plaques, on final plaques.
No, it's a little, it's kind of nebulous as far as CSEC is concerned, which is the governing body for the nine-one-one Regional Plan of Commissions.
What's the next?
It's not clear.
Okay.
The detail.
That's an easier one.
Yeah, sorry. The plaques are not an issue. We'll be able to do that.
That's great. That's what I wanted to.
And I think in the future, there'll be some changes, but there'll be cooperative interaction between the Regional Plan of Commission and the county, so there won't be any miscommunications or anything like that.
Thank you, sir.
And I have a question. Is this approved at this point?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is because I need signatures today, because we have a deadline by tomorrow and require you.
I'm so glad you brought it.
He's got it.
Oh, you already got it.
I just don't get it, John, yet. Let me, let me, let me look at it.
Wait, until after.
Or just get with it. Look after the meeting.
All right, next we have item thirteen, project report on DEA credit, Laughlin Force. Thanks, Weskin.
Good morning. Does everybody have a progress report? I left some in the boxes on Friday. If you don't have one, I have a couple. Copy.
Is that progress with me? You're very appreciative.
Very appreciative. But it looks like we're at the, hopefully we're at the last month, and we can complete this project by the end of the month, according to some of the information I acquired on Friday. Some of the, we're probably about ninety percent complete. The task that we're completing just lately was the pressure test of drywall painting and landscaping. The landscaping, other than the ground cover, is still nebulous, okay? Scheduled events for this, for this month are as follows. We've got the concrete ceiling and curing, their tab, their fire alarm testing, commissioning, generator testing, electrical plant, LIZ, front machines, air quality testing, and the substantial completion, which they have now requested a formal date of August the twenty-eighth, final inspection on the thirtieth, and the clean, final clean, cleanup on the The contractual completion date was Friday, July twenty-eighth, so one month past the contract date. There's still a few concerns, and they're being worked out on a daily basis, obviously, because we only have about fifteen days to go, so Laughlin, a lot of them are between Laughlin, personnel, and procedures and processes and the contractor. They're working through them, and we are, we're pretty hopeful that it'll, it'll happen as it's laid out here.
Just to add to it, I think the Laughlin is going for a transition, a change of command, so they're changing a lot of officers, so there's confusion there. We're going to be pointing, we should be doing.
There's a, there was a certification we were supposed to get on this building.
A lease.
Yeah.
That, that could happen a month, maybe two months after the completion, because all the paperwork has to be submitted, and the lead contractor will make the presentation, and Laughlin will have to review it.
No.
Next, item fourteen, discuss possible action on a rest submission authorizing submission of 2017, 2018 Texas CDVG Colonial Construction Fund application to Texas Department of Paying the金额 of $500,000 for Rancho del Rio Estadio and Valverde Colony pastures.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, everybody. This application that the county proposes to submit to TDA, this one and the following agenda item after this one, two colonial construction fund applications each in the amount of $500,000, and the first one here, consideration is precinct one and precinct two, to provide first-time service to Rancho del Rio Estadio and San Felipe Pastures to complete the loop around Rancho del, Rancho del Rio Colony out there. Existing one that's been completed and closed out, divided service there, about half of that colony, so this one.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Thank you. All right, let's go to item fifteen, discuss possible action on restoration authorization of 2017, 2018 Texas CDVG Colonial Construction Fund application to Texas Department of Paying the金额 of $500,000 for Valverde Estates and Comstock Colonies.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Thank you. All right, next we have discuss possible action on a letter of interest to Texas Department of Paying regarding Valverde County proposing participation between eighteen Texas CDVG debt fund and authorizing the county judge to sign it.
This was before the grant committee a couple of weeks ago, and it's a letter of interest to TDA. The county has to actually be invited to participate in this, full of money coming spring, provide, we're increasing funds to provide a water line there to the community all reason. And if the county code approves this this morning, that'll be sent to TDA. TDA will come down and do an assessment on the county and actually conduct the community, get a community meeting. You have to actually be invited for this. Currently, there are no funds available at TDA for this program, but TDA will be funding funds again for this program beginning February first, two thousand sixteen, excuse me, February first, two thousand eighteen, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis.
Motion to approve. There's a motion. Second.
Are we going to?
This is.
This is materials only, right?
Yes.
It's just a letter.
Funds can be used to provide materials and also any rental equipment, fuel supplies. The majority of work has to be done in-house with county crew.
There's no matching wall, nothing like that, nothing from the county.
No matching.
To keep it fairly equitable. I mean, I don't do these type of projects in my precinct, but I think Commissioner Owens does some of these type of projects.
Is there going to be another one available? I mean.
They come around, actually, they're on a first-come, first-served basis. Currently, there's no funds up there available. TDA fund deeds begin in February first, two thousand eighteen, so you just got to kind of get in line, and they'll find them, you know.
Do a little bit in each one?
They probably won't, they probably, the amount that they'll appropriate for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, probably fund three or four projects they want. Pretty competitive.
And how much is this one?
Three hundred fifty.
Three hundred fifty. We just need to look at maybe some of the other precincts, getting some of these funds later on, sort of get in line.
Sure.
Yep. I wonder if there's a lot more need out there.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody, five zero. All right, next we have item seventeen, discuss possible action on reimbursement request, Texas DOT for county transportation infrastructure grant and authorize the county judge to sign it.
Judge, precinct one and three and four, precinct three is complete, precinct four is complete, had a little bit of cost incurred on precinct one. Anyhow, this is with the county transportation infrastructure grant, the total cost here is ninety-four thousand thirteen dollars, and we've got the request created here for a ninety percent reimbursement in the amount of eighty-four thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and seventy cents.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Thank you. All right, next, item eighteen.
Judge, I'd like to request that this be tabled until the next regular meeting.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Okay. All right, next we have item nineteen, this Consider An Act Upon Contract Amendment Modification Request for Texas CDVG seven twenty-one fifty-four ninety-nine, requesting an additional two months to complete installation of water line project for Valverde for San Felipe Pastures and authorize the county judge to sign it.
Judge, the, with other activities going on in precinct two, I know they've had some washouts up there on Golden Creek Road, so we're requesting here a couple of extra months to complete the activities out there on Hamilton Road. This activity actually has an end date of October fourteenth, so we're requesting sixty additional days, two extra months to complete all the project and put the water line in there alone.
And we ain't having, we ain't even been able to get started, so.
Motion to approve.
It needs to be completed by October?
The, the original contract date was to all activities with that contract be completed in October two thousand seventeen.
We can do it.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Thank you, Carl. All right, item twenty, discuss possible current temporary painters.
Commissioner, I mean, Judge, Commissioners, we'd set aside some money to hire a painting contractor or go out and get bids to paint the courthouse, front doors, inside and stuff like that. They didn't have, the ones that had work in its con, didn't have general liability, and the ones that had general liability didn't have work in its con. So we did set aside some money from the insurance already. I would, at this point, I would ask for permission to hire some painters temporary, labors to go in and do the painting. At what rate? Going rate right now is twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour for the painters.
And the painters are all going to be male?
I don't know. Do you want to think?
Are they insured?
They're going to be armed.
They would be armed.
Okay, there's a motion.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Twelve dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Second. All right, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Next, item twenty-one, discuss possible action on the lease agreement between Valverde County Fairgrounds and the St. Joseph's Holy Smoke Barbecue Cook-Off and Pot Cake.
I'd make a motion to enter into a lease agreement and give authority to the judge to sign.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item twenty-two, discuss possible action on the use of Valverde County Fairgrounds for the flag retirement ceremony.
I'll make a motion to allow them to use the fairgrounds at no charges, like, just like they've done in the past.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item twenty-three, discuss possible action on the use of Valverde County Fairgrounds parking lot for national night out.
And I got parking lot, like the sheriff is saying. Court. There was, there was a misunderstanding probably, that we were researching to see where it would be better, but at this time of week, can get approval to use both and let the, let the group decide where they want to host it to be fine. There was discussion either the fairgrounds or even the yard here at the county courthouse. I'd make a motion to allow them to use whichever one they.
What is it? It's a national night out. They invite people to show up. They actually cook.
It's a community event. They invite the people, the public to come out and then go with law enforcement.
What date is that?
I believe it's June. I'll prove it, man.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the date's coincidental or not.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Next, discuss possible action on setting a fee for the Cadenas rodeo.
This year, we'd had, this year, we'd had, the Cadenas had done a rodeo, a fundraiser for their mother, the Cadenas family that she was going through, had some treatments. They've asked that if they did it next year, and all proceeds to go to scholarships, like for nursing scholarships, if we could waive the fee, and I thought might bring it back before the court. All proceeds will go to, for scholarships.
Make that a full motion.
I'll make that a full motion.
Okay, there's a motion, second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. Item twenty-five, discuss possible action on declaring twenty, twenty oh six S35 pickup truck as surplus and requesting permission to auction.
Judge, we bought this truck a year and a half ago, and we keep working on it, so I would ask that the court allow me to declare surplus and to auction it. That's a motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Nobody? Five zero. All right, next, item twenty-six, presentation proposed sports complex by LPA. Go ahead.
Judge, Commissioners, we've gone through a process with you all in the community to come up with the scope and the vision for your Valverde sports complex, and basically, what do you address this?
I don't know. That one right there, the one you were playing with should have done it. There we go.
Okay, well, that's what we're going to do.
That's simple.
Yeah, there, I'm going to do that, I think that's better. Basically, what we came up with, the overall project, so this is the master plan, this is a full build-out, multiple fields that make this complex. So after a series of community meetings, we started with a theme, with the content, with all the pieces, and subsequent meetings, we talked about options on how it would be organized, and finally, we talked about options on the total cost of some of the options that we're going to start with as part of this whole master plan. So what landed at the last meeting was this option, which is the twenty million dollar option, and the majority of the people voting on this one.
How many acres is it? What do we end up with?
You know, I don't know.
Approximately a little more than fifty acres, close to sixty.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, so this gets us three soccer field, two football fields, which are multipurpose fields, they're all multipurpose fields, two softball, full softball, two majors, two full-size baseball concessions, parking, the gymnasium with courts, walking trails, splash pad in development of the side of course, and then the rest of the land's allocated for the future.
I've got a few questions.
Sure.
Water, I think we're going to do it well, right, for the fields themselves. The water, like for the restrooms and stuff like that, that'll be.
It comes from the city, right there on highway ninety. They have a twelve-inch main.
Yeah, all the way down?
That comes all the way out of ninety, it'll come straight into the sewer. And then sewer is right below that, there at the hotel.
Yeah.
And it'll have to be a lift station moving from this site back down to their system. And probably increasing the lift station that's at.
That's my question. Had we been there at the.
We have not visited with them yet, but that lift station will probably have to be increased, the one that serves the apartments.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not going to be a ton of fixture units here, given the usage.
Okay.
And that was my question, was, I mean, when you figured that load, I mean, we'll get with the city to make sure what we're doing.
Right.
The sewer, the water.
Before you. Before you, there's also retention ponds, so we can use that for the fields too.
Well, that was gonna be my question, is where the retention ponds were at. I've got it on my list just because of the amount of water, when you clear the forty, fifty acres, the amount of water that's gonna hit.
The, the fields and everything are still pervious cover, so there's a certain amount of absorption.
No, and then my question is, is if, when I go out and look at it, I mean, I've got a bunch of trees in there, so I'm gonna, I'm fixing to clear trees. So I mean, that pressure when the water, oh, where were the end of the yellows at?
Right, to the right.
Yeah, to the right, that, where it goes up to the next road, that place right there, that road gets about four foot deep.
Right, when, because the water she flows against the site, so as part of any, um, thoughtful development, we're gonna have to calculate the flow, calculate the, the perviousness of what was there, what we have now. Um, and this is a floodplain and ideally, we wanna design the middle parts and the walking trails to be what we call low impact design or LID. Um, and there's a way to mitigate.
Where's the retention tanks at?
And everything to do almost linear retention.
The judge has brought up some retention tanks.
They're not in there yet because until we do the hydrology study, you don't know where you're gonna place them.
Okay, or the size required.
Once, once the hydrology study is done, if the bond is approved, there'll have to be a hydrology study approval through FEMA, which is our designated, uh, floodplain manager and all of that, then those locations will be, uh, we, we reset at that point.
Yeah, so there's an awful lot of detail that we know we have to do. Um, we've done enough to make sure that this is.
Just the, the retention tanks, because I'm, I'm worried about down there at the bottom, just the amount of water that's gonna hit there.
Yeah, and like I said, all the fields are still pervious, so we're not replacing impervious with pervious area. Um, from now.
You're clearing out sixty acres, now I got water running faster.
Not necessarily, depending on how we.
We could sit down here all day long.
Well, our, our.
When it gets to retention tanks, you know, I'd appreciate it.
No, we, I mean, we have to do that, we're not, our intent is not to flood or change the surrounding areas any at all. So it could be a combination of LID design, a combination of burns, there's all sorts of ways to mitigate the water flow, we, we're gonna design that. I mean, we're not gonna, we don't wanna be sued for flooding downstream neighbors, y'all don't wanna be accused of doing a poor project, nothing about your neighbors. So that's part of our due diligence and our obligation, I wanna become registered professionals.
Looks good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next, item twenty-seven. Item twenty-seven, discuss possible action on checking the plan for the post-sports complex.
That was the, the plan that was picked by the, at the last public meeting, we, uh, we allowed everybody to vote. We put up the plans from the six million to the thirty-five million dollars. And the twenty million dollar plan was, had three more votes than the thirty-five million dollar plan. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the, uh, the, uh, plan that was selected, which was the twenty million dollar plan, and to adopt the master plan as, as presented.
There's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Before we continue in this, let me commend, uh, the vote, 'cause he had great, uh, participation from the community. I think we had, one of the, the largest one was close to a hundred participants. We invited every coach from every league, uh, everybody that was interested in it, and we made sure that they took ownership on this plan. So they, there was real good participation, we had three already, and all of them were very well attended. So I have to commend Commissioner for doing it. All right, okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero.
Judge, on this real quick.
Sure.
I, I think the, the action that the court is doing is, is the right thing, and I vote. My, my vote is of yes is for the process that we're taking. I personally don't believe that we should do this sports complex right now, 'cause we have other items, but again, both of y'all, I wanna thank both of y'all for, for taking this head on. And the amount of, uh, people that have showed up, uh, has really, really, really been impressive.
And like I said, at the end, it's actually the public that's gonna decide if they want it or not, so it's not really up to us, to be honest.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, that I voted for the process.
Okay, thank you.
But you've made comments at other meetings, now that you throw that up, that the court's all behind it, I'm, I'm in favor of the process, I'm not in favor of the process.
Okay. All right, next, item twenty-eight, discuss possible action for the possession of drinking alcohol in Comstock Community Center.
We had an incident up there here recently, um, that they had used this for a family reunion, and I'll pass these pictures around. It was drinking, uh, the vehicles were taken out of the fire station parked outside. They were using it for a barbecue and a family reunion and all kinds of stuff. Uh, that was never the intent of the use of these facilities. It, uh, the sheriff also has facilities there next to it, uh, as you'll see, there were bouncing castles and all kinds of stuff. That, that's not the intent of this facility. So I will make a motion to prohibit, uh, drinking or possession of alcohol on that facility. Second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Next, discuss possible action on move, uh, moving, moving all capital projects under the control of the commissioners' court.
I put this out on the agenda, we have a lot of capital projects and, uh, it's very difficult for all of us to manage all these. I think the court as a whole should be managing it, because the money ultimately comes from this court to fund them. Uh, we need people in charge of these projects that have background knowledge of, of engineering and these types of projects. Uh, we continue to, to come up short on different projects and I think if we have some oversight from the court to manage these projects, I think it's a better fit, um, than all of us trying to manage individual projects. It doesn't mean that each commissioner does not have involvement in those projects, but the, the process that we've used on the library and the Westgate has worked very well. And so I think we need to do that with all of our capital projects.
I'll put that.
So I'll make that into a motion.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
No, I need a second first.
I'll second, first, second discussion.
Uh, we're getting really close to finishing the animal control and then the battered woman shelter. How's that gonna affect that? 'Cause I mean, I.
Well, by the time we, by the time we get down to the second one, which is hiring an engineer and actually hiring somebody, um, I think in the meantime, until we can get somebody in control of it, at least, at least occasionally to report back to the court on what we're doing, until we can get an individual hired to kinda manage and oversee these things.
So by capital projects in construction?
Destruction project.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, four one. Thank you. All right, we're gonna do one more and then we'll take a break. Discuss the possible action on a budget amendment to include salary for county engineer.
I think as part of this, we need an engineer that'll start overseeing these projects, making sure that the plans are reviewed and, and somebody is on site to make sure they're done correctly and we don't have problems down the road. I know that we're in a budget crunch, but I also know that we continue to have to expend funds because of oversight from our, our contract engineers. We need somebody on our staff to oversee these projects and make sure that these engineers and projects are being moved. Uh, I think we need to furnish a sheet with what, I guess she had, looked at what engineers are getting paid in other counties, um, usually pretty steep, um, salaries, but, uh, um, we can either look at, I, I, I think we need an engineer or a construction project manager of some sort to oversee these. This is on the agenda for the court to discuss. I would, um, I would like to see us at least set a salary of seventy-five thousand a year for an engineer. A, a restor professional engineer, which would become a county engineer to manage and oversee these projects.
Is that a civil engineer?
A civil engineer. That would work under the control of the court, with day-to-day operations under the control of the county judge. And I will make a motion to add that in the budget, uh, coming out of currently, if we get it hired this year, which I doubt very seriously is gonna happen, uh, at a salary of seventy-five thousand plus benefits.
Second.
And that the, uh, interviews and everything come before the entire court.
We couldn't wait till February, March, until we figure out what our budget, I mean, if we do this and then do amendment in February and March, just to see how we're coming along with our collections. And at that point, I mean, you know, we've had this discussion, me and you, I mean, I think that it's, it's a great idea. I, I think the guy should also be in charge of the fairgrounds, building, maintenance and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, you, you give him that, that also, we don't have to worry about a place to office him. We can, you know, we've done the materials out there, we can probably build him an office out there, so he's not gonna have a place to, you know, we're not hunting or renting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just with the budget prices.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I think if we start the process of trying, I, I don't think you're gonna find somebody for a while, to be honest with you. Uh, and then the court can always say, you know, we're gonna hold off another thirty days or forty days or sixty days or whatever before we hire it. But if we can add this in the budget process and start the process of, uh, it's gonna take some time to put the, the job descriptions together and all that and start the process. I just, it doesn't mean we have to hire them now, if the court wants to wait and do it in January, February, we can do that, if at least we can start the process of trying to find that individual. I don't know how many people are out there that even be interested to have that degree.
I mean, the conversations that I've had, I think the seventy-five thousand is, I, I think we're going to get some people to apply it, but it's like everything else, trying to get them to deal with it's gonna be a problem.
Well, you know, I mean, I think it's a start and I, I guess the, the court could always adjust the salary at some point if we see it. Most of these salaries that I see from these others, of course, you're looking at Lubbock and El Paso counties, uh, of a hundred thousand, ninety-eight, eighty thousand, uh, somewhere in that ballpark. Um.
I, I would feel more comfortable waiting for February, March, but you've got a second, so.
I got something to say here. Um, yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a great idea, but I think we should wait or, uh, do what we did with, uh, the party. Get somebody from here within, uh, our employees to take over that, that job and, and increase their pay. I mean, give them some more money, but not spend seventy-five thousand dollars.
And, and if the court wants to do just a construction manager, that's an option, uh, but if we're talking about civil engineer, I don't think we have anybody here that has a civil engineering degree. Huh, you do?
Judge, I have a question. If this motion was to be approved, would this be a carved-in-stone provision in the county budget? Or would we have to wait until Monday when we have the budget?
As any new budget, until that new budget's approved, nothing's in there.
Okay.
This is a discussion, we don't have to make the decision today. If we wanna discuss it as part of the budget on Monday, we can discuss it then. But I think we need to start down that road and get that process moving to try to find an individual. If the court prefers a construction manager that has some, has construction background, then we can look at that. I personally think you need somebody that understands how to deal with engineers' plans.
You need somebody with a certification.
When, when you start inspecting text dot jobs, they require certain certifications that you gotta have, and a civil engineer's gonna have those. Because if, if y'all want to have this discussion as part of the budget on Monday, I'm fine with that. I just, I don't have a problem waiting to hire the guy in January, but I think we need to start the process to find out if you're even gonna find anybody for seventy-five thousand dollars. I don't know that that salary's gonna get you the caliber of person that we're looking for. It's up to the court.
Why don't we just table and bring it back in one of these meetings, come on to the court.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I was growing a.
I was growing a second.
Okay, then we'll table in someone. All right, let's take that ten-minute break.
What is going so good?
All right, next, let's go to item number thirty-one. Discusses possible action to amend the budget for precinct four and transfer money from paving to operating budget.
Uh, Judge, what I wanted to do here is, uh, there's some money that's pending in, uh, precinct four will be reimbursed in text stock. And I want the amount, do you have the amount?
It's about, uh, twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three?
I mean, both grants will be about a little over forty thousand.
Yeah, okay, that's about forty-three thousand. Well, anyhow, uh, we're in the process, uh, of getting reimbursed. I don't know, you said it was gonna take thirty, forty-five days maybe? My question is, if I don't get it this fiscal year, not physical, but fiscal year, uh, I would like to amend the budget from paving and move that money to operating. And if I don't get it this fiscal year, I would like for it to be credited next year to paving.
So you wanna put that in form of a motion?
That's, uh, in form of a motion.
Okay.
And we're not to use for.
And operate if I get it this fiscal year. If I don't, if I get it next year, I just wanna credit it to paving. Is that text, text out money, the fixed roads that, that precinct got?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I thought we were taking that out of contingency.
No, 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 no.
I thought, that, that was the deal when we talked about it, that we wanted to make sure that it didn't cut into our budgets. Where the funds that we were getting to pay back from the text out, that they would come out of contingency and then reimburse contingency. Well, when we got the forty-some odd thousand, I'm.
That's where it was supposed to come from.
Would you still do that?
Right.
You can credit, uh, precinct four from.
Credit precinct four with a contingency, yes.
Amend the budget and, and, and transfer it to operating.
And then your, your line out in budget here, did you still wanna proceed with this?
Excuse me?
Are you still proceeding with this line out in budget?
To move money from paving to operating.
Yes.
How much?
No, no, I mean, that reimbursement, I mean, the forty-some thousand. I'm not moving anything else, but, but what I'm gonna.
Okay.
Be credited for you. You just need to change where you put the money from.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, um, I need a second for that motion?
What, we need a motion?
Okay.
They're just gonna take it out of there and.
All right. Uh, next, we have item thirty-two, requesting consolidation of an election precinct for November seventh, twenty seventeen constitutional amendment. Final election approving, holding location where the consolidated election precincts.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Item thirty-three, setting rates for pay for judges and carts ten dollars per hour, including additional delivery fee, fifty dollars for election day, judges on the election.
Move.
And motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Item thirty-four, requesting appointment of election judges, alternate judges, county clerk deputies for November seventh, twenty seventeen constitutional amendment and final election.
Motion approved. Third and taken.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Next, item thirty-five, requesting appointment on November seventh, twenty seventeen constitutional amendment, bond, election, central county station manager, alternate manager, central county station judges, tabulation supervisor, early ballot board judges.
Move. Second.
Move and a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Item thirty-six, requesting destination of number of election carts to serve at each polling location on November seventh, twenty seventeen constitutional amendment, bond, election.
Move.
Move.
Take.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Next, item thirty-seven, discuss possible action regarding the appointment of selection committee review to submit RSTs for architectural services and design, develop construction plans for the county administration building.
This will be coming new, we'll get whoever turns in, um, qualifications, we need somebody to evaluate and score them.
You have a committee? Recommendation?
We don't have.
We just need to create a committee.
We need to create a committee, yes.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Muske, Matt, and then Lloyd, and then if the court wants somebody from this court, that's.
Gus. Yeah, boss.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion, need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Discuss, discussion and possible action regarding the request post for grant administrator, engineer firm assistant prior for twenty eighteen Texas CDBG step, uh, fund and establish a selection committee review committee to evaluate the responsibility. You want same committee?
Chair, whatever, the court.
Well, the same people and then just put, uh, judge on it versus guy, so. That's a little bigger.
Move, need a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Next, item thirty-nine, discuss possible action regarding cap, cap, like, outlet expenditures, office equipment, one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars, he says, trailer's office, and fourteen thousand five hundred. office, and fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-two and seventy-nine cents from district clerk's office.
Wasn't the last one from the district clerk, twenty-four thousand? Now we're down to fourteen. Motion to approve the county treasurer's. Just gonna treasurer.
Okay, there's a motion, need a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, negative by say nay. Aye, all those opposed, what about the district clerk's office?
All right, the court can do whatever it wants, I'm not moving for it. I think they have funds, they can find this one.
All right, next, item forty, discuss possible action regarding the addition of smartphones to the sheriff's training department.
Actually, one phone, I'm sorry.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, negative by say nay. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Item forty-one, discuss possible action regarding the payment of expedited persons not to comply with purchase of certain policies.
We've got some dating issues and some M P O issues.
Let's give a smaller motion to approve.
Motion, need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by say nay. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Thank you, Mr. Muske.
Thank you, that was easy.
All right, next, item forty-two, discuss possible action on establishing the base pay for district attorney's staff. And what, this one here, what he wanted was basically to be compatible with the county attorney's base pay.
But y'all aren't saying salaries, because they don't work for the county.
What?
They don't work for the county.
I know. But if we do take him in, that he wants, he wants the.
Something about this. The list, what you've calculated, we've talked about.
Well, this one's actually, I think the other item has to do with that.
That's the other, this one, just basically, that his base, if we take him in, start at the same base as the county attorneys.
We haven't taken him in, I don't remember what y'all's base was on.
But they don't work for the county, so you don't take that action, that's what you, they're not even in the budget.
Basically, what he wants, consider it, if we take him in, to consider that, that's what he wants. Okay? So we're not gonna take any action, we'll consider that one. All right, next one, discuss possible action on the, action on the border protection unit grants.
Can I refer to?
Sure.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
In reference to this item, I just wanna let you know that we were able to get our grant approved that we'd applied for. And in addition, it actually is an increase in the grant, so our grant right now, I believe it's at one eighty-seven, if I'm not mistaken. And that also includes not only the border prosecutor with the salary benefits, trainings, supplies, et cetera, but it also has a new position for an investigator as well. And again, this grant money, there's no money coming from the county, it's strictly reimbursable from the, from the grant. And we're asking the court to accept and approve this grant at this time, so you can go ahead. I think, Mr. Fadilla, in the back, I may have to actually notify them and hit a button that says accept, so we need to get that done as soon as possible. I will be asking that to be put on the budget, to amend our budget as well.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, indicate by say nay. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Muske.
Thank you very much, Judge.
All right, the next item, if we do take him in, he wanted to consider the possible action on setting the salaries for district attorneys investigator, district attorneys person, second assistant. And that, this that you got right now is the one that, if we do take him in, to consider this salary.
You wanna get up there and we'll look at this real quick at the same time.
I think there was three.
When you go across, yeah.
There was three, the first, first assistant, second assistant, and the.
I didn't clear it up.
And the investigator. Those are the ones that wanted to be considered if we do.
These were the ones?
Yeah, the first three. The first one, the proposed salaries were eighty-one thousand, next one would go eighty-five, sixty-nine would go to seventy-two, forty-five would go to forty-six-five. That's what he's.
What, what I did on the paper, the salary as, as paid today, that's what they're getting paid right now. The county salary with raises, if they just stayed with us, that's what they'd be making. What we've done in the past is, is taken whatever they're getting paid, you can't, you can't take that credit and put it somewhere else. And that would be worth this county proposed salaries, that is what, if you take the lower of the two, that's where we're at. We met with Mr. Bagley last week, and he had asked that, on the far right-hand corner, instead of eighty-one, six-twenty-seven, if we could go to eighty-five, the second investigator, or second assistant, sixty-nine, nine-twenty-eight to seventy-two.
Thank you.
And then the office manager could go to forty-six-five, basically bump them up a little bit.
That was investigator.
That was investigator, that's right.
But you're, what he's asking for is, is the far right-hand corner, if we would go up a little bit on the salaries, my opinion is, not thinking would be no. I mean, I, I, he's saying like that, I mean, basically, we set the salaries of county as, if you take the second from the right-hand corner, that's pretty much what they would be making. You take the lower of the two, that's where you're at.
And then the difference, Mr. Bagley?
Commissioner, the difference is, of course, and we've discussed this the other day with Commissioner Owens, with the judge, we talked about this, and with Mr. Ryan, the county auditor. I understand that any difference is basically my discretion as to whether or not I wanna use my discretionary funds to offset the salaries to supplement it. I fully intend to do that for the benefit of my employees.
And there's a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. But the only thing I'm trying to do is just to narrow the gap. You know, the bottom line is this, is that, you know, yes, I'm gonna have discretionary funds available, I'm hoping to, to realize and receive some reimbursement from the funds that I had made accessible to the county and the county depository with the text committee bank. So I'm trying to narrow the gap. The argument can be made, basically, is, the reason for that is, if I have to spend less each year, that's just gonna be able to let me use it further in the line, down the line. And that's what I'm trying to do.
No, no, I understand. How did you get such a difference between your legal secretary and your third legal? I'm assuming, because they've been there a long time?
No, the, the third legal on there, he actually had, where it says legal secretary, that position was actually a third assistant listed on our page. That's a company with sixty-nine thousand and.
And we're not asking for a third assistant position at this time. Basically, what I'm doing is, I have a first, I have a second, and I have a V P U prosecutor. And that kinda fills the gaps, and with myself, that makes four attorneys in our office.
Okay.
In twenty, in twenty-twelve, they had six positions available from first assistant, second assistant, and then where it says third legal, that was actually a third assistant. And they had district investigator, office manager, and legal secretary. He added the last legal secretary that was not in our budget.
That's right.
And then these, these health and dental, is that under our plan?
Yeah.
That would be bringing them under.
If we brought the health and dental under our plan, that would be the cost, the retirement, that would be the cost. If you looked under salary as paid today, that, under that column where it says retirement, that's seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two ninety-two. That is a port, that is based on the difference on what we would be paying, what he would have to come up with. And then the fight is what he'd have to come up with. Plus the difference between, in my opinion, would be the three oh five eight oh nine and the three seventy-two.
I have a question about form. Why is it that Mr. Bagley's budget proposal wasn't put into the budget? If y'all had put it in the budget, you could be discussing and making decisions.
So we can't discuss it?
You can discuss it, it's on the agenda, but I don't know why y'all didn't just put it in the budget. And that way you could compare how much you were spending on the district attorney's office versus how much you're gonna spend in the future.
I think that the thing about this is, we hadn't taken him in yet, so we didn't wanna put him in the budget yet until we take him in.
Okay, you don't wanna put him on the budget until you take him in, but you wanna talk about it before you put him in the budget.
He's actually in the budget, on one nine item for four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
He is in the budget for the four hundred thousand dollars. This way, we're trying to figure out where we're gonna get to, whether it's gonna be the four hundred, the four seventeen or the four twenty-four.
They would be dealt with the same way you would any new county employee, because that's what they are, new county employees. So if I were asking for a third assistant, you know, you put it in there, and then later on you discuss what to do with it, but, you know, it just seems, it's just.
What are we currently paying?
We pay four hundred and ten.
Four ten, so this will go to four seventeen.
It'd go to four seventeen or four twenty-four.
It's about seven thousand dollars.
And then you look, he has funds, but they're still doing on it on, and I put those up for.
That makes the difference.
Well, you have the DPS special project, that's pretty much his, pretty much his. District payroll is still his, and district, the last one is still his, the one that we're doing on it on right now is a six hundred and fifteen. And by all accounts, he's probably gonna end up with about two hundred and some odd thousand dollars of that left over.
And I would also tell you as well, and advise the court as well, that on the district attorney payroll, that is the account that we're using right now to make sure that our people get paid and our bills are paid. And I understand that there's an item on later for possibly proving our bills as well. So that money is gonna be depleted between now and then this fiscal year.
You should have, at the end of the day, out of that six fifteen, probably have a couple hundred thousand dollars of that left over, which you probably have a pretty check around four hundred or under to come back to the court.
And then just remember that the court sets the salaries. Even if Mr. Bagley supplements it with his own, you guys are the ones that have to set the salary, and you can't pay more than that when they're counting grants.
What do you mean?
Let's say the court approves ninety thousand dollars as a salary, that's the salary set. If Mr. Bagley wants to pay an additional five thousand, he should come back to the court and you approve ninety-five thousand.
So your salary in the budget includes your supplement?
You're talking about money? Yes, it does.
That's what, yeah. The salary that we set in the budget includes your supplement.
Yep.
I don't know what you're asking.
No, I don't.
Yeah, he's just trying to, you know, to track me. The thing here is that every county employee, you set the salary for every county employee, regardless of where the funds come from. So if Mr. Bagley gets, you say, you're gonna pay this person ninety thousand dollars, and then Mr. Bagley says, well, I have these five thousand dollars over here, he can't give that employee the additional five thousand unless they come back to the court, because the court sets the salaries regardless of where the funds.
And that's what I'm asking, is, all of the elected officials in this county that have a supplement, when we set their salary, that salary includes whatever supplement they're getting from another source.
No, no, it doesn't.
Under W two, it does, of course.
Well, then you guys are doing it wrong, because you're supposed to do that. And when you, when you publish notice of the elected official salaries, it's supposed to have the salary and the supplement. And that's the way we've always.
When we publish it, it does.
But the budget, we just have the salary that the county pays, and then there's another supplement.
Right, and y'all approve.
It's not all part of the.
But you approve that.
And what I would suggest, gentlemen, and said, and I agree with Mrs. Smith on it, if we were to do this, whatever you said, of course, well, number one, I'm not gonna be foolish, I'm gonna take it. But number two, you know, if I agree and I determine that I'm gonna supplement my employee's salaries, I'll certainly bring it back to it before the commission's work to get approval. And I intend to funnel that money through the H R, through the department. And if that's going to be the case, I know we've discussed possibly about, maybe I should pay it either at monthly basis, quarterly, or whatever. I don't intend to do, I intend to do it on a one-payment basis.
And also, you can't obligate Mr. Bagley to use certain funds if they're discretionary.
No, we're not. I mean, you know, and I think what we had talked about was that we would set the salary as to what would be paid by the county. And then if he's going to pay other funds, then that, that would be set by the court, but he'd have to pay for the supplement.
But that would be set by the court, and that's the right.
Right. We completely agree.
If, yes, so far. If Mr. Bagley runs out of those funds, and I think that's why he's asking for bigger increase in the, in the county's contribution, then what's gonna happen?
We're gonna have to come back and revisit it.
And, and we talked about this in the meeting, and like I told Mr. Bagley, in one of five, my opinion is, is that we would go with, the court is obligated to pay the lower salaries. If, if he's paying them, that one that is at eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven, then the court is obligated to pay it, not the hundred thousand that the individual is getting paid. At the point that he doesn't have funds, we are only obligated at that point to pay the eighty-four.
If you set the salary at, at eighty-six.
Okay, then we're gonna have to visit on that with you, because we contacted other counties, and other counties do it like that. There's a, there's a, there's a column that they pay, and then there's a supplement that the district attorney's paying.
Yeah, and then you come back to the court and you adjust that salary. It's, the salary itself, what those counties do is, they set the salary and show the contribution, but they're still setting the salary. The salary is, you know, ninety plus ten.
And in our conversation with the other counties was that they set the salary, and they were only obligated for X.
Right.
And you're telling me that if I set the salary, I'm obligated for X and Y, or A, B, C?
Unless you come back and reduce their salary.
So it's, it's, it's possible to get it done.
It's possible.
As long as we go into this with the understanding that the court, at the end of the day, is still only gonna be obligated for the eighty-one thousand, whatever, not the hundred thousand. And then when it comes back, that's what the court would vote to at that time, probably.
But of course, we're also hoping that.
But you have to take that action, you have to take that affirmative action.
We'd have to come back.
You can't take the money away until you've taken that.
We'd have to take, but it's, it's possible by the action.
Yes. But it's also possible, we're hoping that down the line, three, four years down the line, however long I'm gonna have these funds available if I choose to use them, that of course, these salaries are going to increase along with everybody else's salaries throughout the county.
And we had that discussion also.
I'm not a hundred percent convinced you can come back and cut somebody's salary.
Well, then how are you, okay, that may be true, but that goes to Commissioner Owens' situation. If, if Mr. Bagley says ninety plus ten, I'm gonna pay the ten, and he has, he doesn't have the ten anymore, then what do you do?
No, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not.
If you're not gonna reduce the salary, then what do you do?
I just don't know that we have a legal authority to reduce the salary.
Okay, so if you don't reduce the salary, and Mr. Bagley doesn't have the ten, then what do you do?
Yeah, but I, I, I'm also under the assumption that we can set these salaries in our budget, and he, and then we can set a supplement to those salaries independent, that funded for him, so the salaries are set at the eighty, the supplement is set here in the budget for an additional ten that's added to that. So if that supplement goes away, we're still only obligated to what we set in, as part of it.
Well, if you get that specifically in the order, then again, it's just a matter of the court approving, setting those salaries, regardless of how you word it, what you do, as long as you set the salaries, and you have that understanding.
Right.
And, and the employee has the understanding, that if that money goes away, the salary's gonna be reduced.
And I intend for my employees to have that understanding, believe me.
And that's what we, that's everything, what you just said, the second go-round, is what we had talked about.
Right. And another thing I would like to mention.
Bottom line is, the court sets the salary.
All right, and as she indicated, of course, it is my discretion to use those funds, but I do intend to do that. I'm not going to let my people down, because I promised them, I guaranteed them something, I intend to fulfill their promise.
And one of the deals in here, real quick, that, when he presented his, his thing, he had retirement at seven percent, our retirement just next go-round is at eleven point eight one, is that right?
Yes.
And that's figured in here, so it's considerable.
And again, gentlemen, all I'm asking for is for you to please consider those requests. I'm only attempting to narrow the gap. I want to try to make this last as long as possible. I think every employee in this county deserves raises. I understand that we, especially in our departments, when we're talking about the professionals that have Georgetown degrees or any type of professional degrees, it is very difficult for us to bring someone down here to Del Rio and get them to stay here at a low base salary. And if they're not from Del Rio, they're probably not gonna come unless they're gonna make a little bit more money.
Or because they like us a lot.
Or because they like us a lot, right.
The second from the right-hand column?
So...
That would, that is pretty much in line with what we've done in the past with other people's salaries.
Much. That's all I have, gentlemen. I'll let you consider it and take action if necessary. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Owens, I have one more question. When you set salaries, when you set salaries for employees, what factors do you take into consideration?
When you set the salaries.
Be careful, you know, the only morning this is going to come back.
Swing visit on that, that's not on the agenda.
It's setting salaries.
Yeah, he's already walked off.
All right.
Lucifer positive, we're done.
All right. Item forty-five, discuss post-action, complete service.
Do we take action on that?
Until we take, we'll take a minute. Okay, next, discuss post-action on obtained services for preservation architect regarding repairs to the north and west porticoes. Of the county courthouse.
Thank you, Judge. I believe you all have a copy of this report that was done, engineering report that was done in reference to the deterioration of the stone at the north and west porticoes of the courthouse. By the way, this, this particular study came at no cost to the county.
Pretty thorough.
Yes, it is. Thank you. If you noticed, in the very last paragraph, under recommendations for stone court, courtiers' repair, it states that a mason skilled in historical masonry remediation, utilizing composite repairs to use. Also, they recommend that we consult a preservation architect, architect prior to commencing repairs. What I did, I talked to a lady that was very helpful at Texas Historical Commission, a lady by the name of Tanya Salgado, and she was able to prepare for me a list of, and did send me a list of approved architectural, preservation architects, if the court should choose to go after RFQs for an architect. But this was the recommendation.
Is insurance going to help us with this?
Uh, no, sir. The insurance has already helped with the study.
The biggest problem with this is when they put all this stuff up, they screwed through the top of it, so it's breaking right where the cracks are at. County crews had replaced the bus of it, but I think it's gotten to the point now that, you know, we're just doing Band-Aids. You sort of need to get somebody in here that's...
Can actually identify it a little bit better and...
I was telling, I was telling Commissioner Owens and Carl that the state pumped in a lot of money for historical preservations. There's a lot of grants out there, so I asked Carl to look and see if we can get some grants to help us with these costs, and he's going to look into it. Hopefully, we can get some grants to repair these buildings.
There was one sentence in here that I liked, because he said that the repairs were actually a big hill, so the county crews, they did what they were good at. Very good, sir. So do we need to do something, or?
I think we should wait to see if there's any grants out there with Carl, and how we're going to repair this. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
This is really something that we're going to need to do. Yeah.
We got pieces falling. Can you just remove the whole thing off the floor?
All right, item forty-six, discuss post-action regarding the request for tech to conduct an evaluation of impact for the county to use the phrase of district insurance.
This was covered by Mr. Guzman, his comments, public comments, I believe.
Is it going to cost us anything to have him investigate this?
No, it's not binding either to have it done.
Motion to approve.
There's a second. Any more questions? Not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. All right, next, item forty-seven, discuss post-action on paying investments for repairs on Malagro Lane fence.
This might, might not be common knowledge to some of the court members that were not here when Malagro Lane was established, but there was a donation of land by W.S. Nixon at that time that was used for the right-of-way, and it clearly states in the gift deed that the county would be responsible for the maintenance of the fence. I believe Commissioner Middleton was here at that time, and I confirmed with him that that was the agreement as it stated in here. Apparently, there's been two incidences, one in June and one in August, where extensive damage was done to the fence. I visited with Mr. Nixon, and of course, in previous years, there had been no livestock in this particular section of his land. And Commissioner Middleton, who I need to call, Commissioner Middleton, he'd get out there and fix it. But now that there's livestock in there and et cetera, what they've done is they've gone ahead and had it repaired immediately, so the stock didn't get out, created even a bigger problem. There's two bills that Mr. Nixon has paid. The total of the two bills is four thousand four hundred and five dollars. One of the damages was pretty extensive. The lady spun around and took out a large section of the fence. On one of these, what I'm going to try, and I can't promise the court that it'll be successful, but to see if there might be some way I can subrogate. One of these people had liability coverage, the other didn't, and I'm going to try and subrogate on the one that had, which I'm not sure if this is going to be successful, because the fence actually is not our property, but I'm going to give it a try.
We have an obligation under the contract. We should be able to charge their insurance for that call.
I'm going to give it my best shot.
So, but we need to pay?
Yes.
And then attempt to get our money?
Need a motion to pay the four thou, well, four thou, total bill of both of them, the four thousand four hundred and five dollars.
And then you're going to try to get our money back on both of them?
Yes, sir.
Uh, make a motion to pay the bills. Didn't we have some money in the commissioner's budget for right-of-way and fencing? But I don't remember if we had any money. I don't know if there was.
Yeah, there was.
But there's not.
There wasn't much. I thought fifteen hundred.
Oh, fifteen hundred?
I thought so. Y'all talking? Did y'all figure it out?
Right, we have right-of-way this year, yes.
But not, the current year, but you don't remember how much it was. We don't have four thousand dollars in there all the time. I think it was only like fifteen, eighteen dollars.
I think it was like fifteen hundred or something.
Huh?
Fifteen hundred.
I'll make a motion to take fifteen hundred of that out of there to pay this and the rest out of contingency.
Second motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody.
For clarification, this will be reimbursed. The payment will be to Mr. Nixon. He has a couple of checks here.
No, no, that's fine. But once we get, if we get claims against their insurance people, they need to come back.
Yes. And I've also visited with Mr. Nixon about having the possibility of having you draw up that picture, depending upon your best view.
That'll only happen when we have time. Who's the fence builder that's doing that?
Uh, Tony Aranda.
Who's second, Mr. Smith?
Aye. All right. There's a motion, second, and all? Everybody willing? Nope, nobody willing. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. Item forty-eight, discuss post-action regarding request approved, document contest form released to be used by Beverly County Library.
Saying this, Counselor.
It's a standard form.
You okay? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. Item forty-nine, discuss post-action regarding acceptance of check donation from Mr. Frank Lars for the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So move?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. Item fifty, discuss post-action on approval of to fill one or two vacant part-time positions by a master level librarian at half regular part-time hours with two times pay fourteen hours per week at fourteen dollars.
Motion to deny. Motion to deny.
Motion to deny. That's second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. And the last one, discuss post-action on approval of purchase of ten laptop with a price of ten thousand forty-three, four hundred and thirty-three to be used.
Where's this coming from?
My computer budget.
Why was he not bought out of the bond?
I don't know. There's been a lot of discussion about it, but it's never happened. And since we do have the money, I'm just trying to get it done.
Some money's left. Can it be done?
Should be, because we set aside money for it. Yeah. Oh, so you're working on it.
You are, okay. I wasn't aware of that.
And we don't need to take action.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
All right, aye. Item fifty-two, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to convert Deputy Sheriff Bailiff position to Sergeant position.
Yes. Commissioner, Judge, we're kind of restructuring a little bit. There's not a salary increase. It's just a title change.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed.
We'll take off. You're doing away with the deputy's position?
No. No, we're not. We're...
Changing it.
Changing the title. That's all we're doing.
So he's not coming off the street. It's his deputy sheriff. He's not going to be one of our patrol guys coming off the street.
That's his, that's his, that's his title.
You're talking about the bailiff that's here now?
The bailiff that's here now, yes.
You didn't have a bailiff position, so he was classified as a deputy?
Yes. We're getting some of that straightened out.
Okay. So I just want to make sure you're not removing somebody else.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Next, item fifty-three, discuss post-action on authorized, first phase to accept the twenty eighteen sheriff and constable's fee report.
We don't give...
Uh, there were some corrections made, so we'll go to that one, so I'll pass out a new list. Visiting with Constable Bird yesterday.
Counselor, as part of that, when we went through all the special funds, is there additional fees that you know we can charge that are not on this list?
I'd have to look at the...
Can we come back and amend this later if we find...
Sure.
And then all of this money that comes in for these different ones, I'm assuming, are set up with the treasurer, is supposed to go to whatever...
To the fees of office and submitted.
Yes, sir.
So the change from the, from the one we previously got was the service fees went from sixty to seventy-five. Also, the standby fee went from twenty-five to forty-five, and also we included, there was a surety, we included a constable deed in there also, so they can charge that fee.
These fees, is there anything in the statute that sets the limits on them or something?
Yes.
On how much the amounts can be?
On how much the amounts can be.
Are we at those limits on all of them?
We are compatible with surrounding counties.
No, but the statute?
Yes.
Are we within, are we within the guidelines of the statute?
No, no.
Are we at the max that we can charge?
I'll have to look at each individual.
Yeah.
Yes, we can do that.
I would see no reason not to charge the amount necessary. Like just sheep and goat per day, nine dollars a day?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you can't feed a goat for nine bucks a day.
We actually, we actually did that five years ago, right?
About four years.
Four or five years ago.
I mean, I think we need to relook at some of these fee structures.
Which ones in particular, Commissioner?
I have all of them. I'd like to look at all of them related to, related to what the statute allows us to charge versus what we are charging, okay?
The ones on animal control, I think there was a statute we actually done, cost.
Yeah.
Just basic cost that you can look at. It said we could. It didn't say how much.
And then I have another question. I know, and I've asked jury to look into this, when we respond, the fire department responds to an accident, we can, we can charge their insurance to recover that cost for that fire department to go out there. Can y'all do the same thing or not? Y'all cannot?
Not to respond to an accident?
Yep.
No, it's part of our, it's part of our duties.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. Need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
If y'all can look through them and kind of give me a...
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
All right.
Yo, aye. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, next, item fifty-four, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to resign, reassign...
Resign.
Non-credit card to Ramiro Reyes to Manera Rida.
Motion to approve.
And motion, second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. I thought you were asleep. All right.
I was motioning to approve. Okay, I got you, right. That's just me.
Item fifty-five, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to apply for and accept the office, accept and for and accept the office of Governor Criminal Justice Division Rightful Assistant Body Armor Grant and requesting adoption of a resolution there.
Motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion, a second?
Judge, item fifty-four, did we have a second and a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Who was the second?
I made the second.
Who made the second? And the board was passing?
I made it.
How many is that for, Sheriff? How many body owners is that for?
We have, we have to apply for that grant, and it depends on what we get, depends how many. Right now, we're looking at, uh, Patrol Division, which is about twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, who made the motion? I'm sorry, I'm assigning this. Who made the...
Mr. Owens made the motion. I made the second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. Item fifty-six, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to redact memorandum of understanding between Beverly County and Shumla Architect, Architectural Research and Education Center.
This is the one we talked about for the conference?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Will you look at this, Counselor?
Oh, yeah, I dragged it. I think I saw it.
I need, I need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Item fifty-seven, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to sign task force agreement for fiscal year twenty eighteen.
I'm so proud.
Yeah, I'm telling them, I meant it.
This is a renewal of an agreement that's been ongoing for years, so I'm with DEA signing some more of our personnel to that task force.
Someone?
Move. Need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero.
Do you have the written?
I'm making, I believe that's it there. I'll give it.
Okay. All right, next, item fifty-eight, discuss post-action authorizing Sheriff Joe Frank Martinez to hire and train a jail monitor.
Uh, this one here, our current jail monitor, probably very shortly will be given you two weeks' notice. That's a further position. So we want to be able to hire someone with existing salary funds to pay for a period of two weeks' allowance or so, till we get that transfer.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have motion and second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item fifty-nine, discuss post-action to transfer six thousand one hundred from crane budget count to suffice. I think Terry was the one that wanted to transfer. He's not here today, but he's...
He's not here today because he was short.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion a second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Next, item sixty, monthly credit report.
Morning.
Morning.
Hope you enjoyed the comments. What do you want? No, no, we'll wait for next one.
Is he on it or something?
Need a motion?
Well, I put it here somewhere, and I can't find it. How are we doing as far as making it to the end of the year?
You want to go there?
Yeah, I want to go there. The sun balance looks all small.
Mm-hmm. And they are. Here we come. Okay. What's the question?
How are we looking in cash to make it through the end of the year?
If we follow our process.
Regardless of where we're at, and if we just allow everybody to keep doing what they're doing.
And if we follow our process.
Which process?
We still have to take our drawdown.
So you're talking about, we need to draw down, put into here, if we don't freeze the budget or do anything. Even if we do that, we're still going to need to draw down.
Correct. Yes. That's, that's how the budget was, and we set it up and passed it.
Didn't it work?
I just, yeah.
What?
It's a clear question. It's a very concise, clear question.
Only question I have.
All right. I need a motion.
So...
Move. Need a second? Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody. Five-zero. Item sixty...
I thought we were talking about it.
Discuss the post-action regarding the resolution to maintain...
Basically, they didn't offer.
Minor credit for Beverly County with contract.
We've done this the last two years.
We need a signed resolution, a couple hundred reports that we need to turn in to the bank, they'll, uh, the board will usually approve it, hopefully they still approve it, but we shouldn't have an issue, we just need a signed resolution.
Get a resolution?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Have motion, need a second?
I'll second, could, uh... What you gonna use? Really, you wanna go down there, right? You're all right?
All right, there's a motion, second. All those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody.
This one needs to be signed a triplicate, and everyone needs one copy to start the process. It needs to be signed three times. You sign this one page three times? Now, if you watch on my page.
All right, let's go now to item sixty-two, HR monthly reports. Need a motion?
I will get one, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Anita, everything falls within the, does it? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. All right, let's go now to item sixty-three, Compton County Attorney Report.
Someone?
So move, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, all those opposed, anybody pose? Okay. the sheriff's office, transfer twelve thousand of software maintenance to operating supplies, and five thousand for travel and train to operating supplies.
Okay, um, yes, we can discuss that first, we can go back to a few items and wrap those up real quick.
Okay.
Okay, on US to the end of the year, yes, to the end of the year, we do tell, at the beginning of the year, that's, there could be issues beginning of the year. Okay. Um, second, on, on your POs, on that, that PO did not state that it was for, uh, the grant, so that's why it was put in your operating. So, on the POs, if we could state what it's for, then we can take it out of the correct account. That's why they're not a contingency. Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that adjustment, and we'll wipe that clean. Okay, now back to sixty-four.
Go forward, Sheriff. You okay with this?
Commissioner, uh, we recently had twenty-one thousand brought into the auto, uh, so we don't need to put those five thousand there, but if we can combine the request for the transfer of twelve, twelve, twelve thousand and five thousand, making it seventeen, to, to a category of where we can purchase, uh, computers, uh, since we're being cut, uh, computers for the upcoming budget, uh, we were working very hard to try to get what we could out of this budget, so that's what, those funds would be used for replacements of those computers.
Motion to approve.
Motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Then item sixty-five, discuss possible action on approval of payment for district attorney's bills?
Why are we approving this? What, what are we approving?
We're approving the bills that were in your package.
Yeah, it's basically like we're doing, what we're doing, what we do for our own, so they're actually going through the PO process and everything. I just didn't throw it in the days, um, with everybody else's bills.
Right, because they're not set up on the county yet, which is hopefully something we can talk about.
So how you paying them?
He's got them.
We're paying them out of the back payroll account, the ninety-three thousand dollars.
Understand that, that's not part of the county, right?
Correct.
That's not part of the county? We gave him the money, and he's paying his own bills since he's independent of the county?
Correct, but we're signature on it.
Understand that, but, but we approve them.
Because we're signature on it.
Because you're the signature holder.
I'm the signature on it, then you present it to you.
So we're just authorizing you to sign them for the...
Correct.
Got you.
Motion to approve.
Need a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Five zero. Thank you, Matt. Uh, Mr. Smith, do we need to run executive session?
I have a couple of disinformation things I think are...
Okay, all right, we're now going to executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven one, verses one, verses eight, and Government Code five five one point zero seven one, verses two. Thirty-five, back in session, no action was taken. All right, now let's go, uh, any subdivision plans?
Yes, I have one, y'all. Commissioner Middleton, this is Commissioner Middleton, please, this is the one we talked about initially, where, basically, we're renewing it.
Remember we talked about it, but they're cutting it in half, they're, they're, they're combining it.
It has a motion, I need a second?
What's it on, Mr.?
Uh, Rancho, uh, east of the division. And it...
There's the second, any, any discussion? Not all those in favor, if you by say aye. Aye, four zero. All right, next, we have, uh, approval certificates of compliance, any certificate of compliance?
Got it.
Any certificate?
Okay.
Okay, need a motion to approve, some move, monthly, uh, lifted off official, there's a mo, a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, if you by say aye.
All right, I got it.
Aye. All right, four zero. All right, next, we have the total of, uh, bills to be paid.
Do you have one?
To add?
To add, correct.
Yeah.
Bickerstaff? It's coming out of contingency, like the rest of them.
Let's do it, sir.
Just throw that out there.
I have some civil money, I don't know if you've looked at it, civil litigation money in my budget.
You're volunteering?[1707.12]